Ladies and gentlemen, it is 5:30, so we'll go ahead and get the meeting called to order. Thank you for being here for our June 2025 board meeting. I appreciate everybody's attendance. For all of you that are fathers, I know I'm a day late, but Happy Father's Day for yesterday. I hope you enjoyed it, had a great day and, um, yeah, cool celebrating. So we will look forward to a great meeting. We're going to open up with our prayer and invocation. I'm going to ask Mr. Charles Reese if he'll lead us with that. And then following the prayer and invocation, Sheriff Craig, would you please just pledge?
Yes, sir.
May we bow our heads and pray. Father God, just thank you for this time of gathering. We thank you for community. We thank you for just your many, uh, many favors and grace upon this, this place. Father God, I just ask that you continue to bless our commissioners as they, as they lean on you for wisdom, as they lean on you to make it a better community for those to live here in Higgins County. We just ask the easiest of things, name Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. What do you want to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As we move through our agenda, uh, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. I do have two amendments from the time that it was originally advertised. It came up since last Monday. Uh, one is, uh, under new business, adding item F to 2026 SLOSS discussions. And then the second would be under new business, item G, a consideration and approval of the Henderson Mountain Road Waterline Project bid. We did have bids that were open, um, and we didn't know if we were going to receive back the recommendations from the engineering, but they did get those to us. So I've got that as an amendment as well. With those two amendments, do I have a motion to approve the agenda or do you have anything for me like that?
Motion to approve, let's present.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
No.
The agenda is approved, so we'll move through with that. Uh, we'll kick off first. I know that, uh, our tax commissioner does an employee of the quarter each quarter, so I would like to invite our tax commissioner up to present his employee of the quarter.
As always, thank the chairman here for allowing us to do this and the post commissioners for giving us the opportunity, uh, to do this, uh, to partly come highlight what goes on in our office a little bit. Uh, we want to recognize, uh, Chelsea Walden tonight, and she is actually, it's not, it's not something easy to get because of what you've got to do to earn the employee of the quarter there in the office, but she's actually now wanted back to back. So, um, get Chelsea to go ahead and come up. But we want to, um, her, I hope we appreciate her because she's one of the ones that's kind of, you know, when you, when you said she's like the same all the time, she doesn't ever seem to get really high or really low, but she just does her job when she comes in. So she's always active, she's always busy, she's always doing something. And so, uh, you know, we got a good one whenever we hired her. So, um, we're very, very thankful to her. But as, you know, when an employee of the quarter twice, you know, it gets, like I said, it's a merit based, um, award. So we want to give her a $50 gift card, a get out of jail free card, which gives her a day off with pay and the bragging rights to hang on to the desk, let the others know the two ones. All right, so we appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Pick out your places to smile. Thank you. Congratulations, Chelsea.
Thank you.
You got a highly competitive retirement back there because I think we get compliments on a almost daily basis just in the service that was provided there on the front line. So, um, that's, that's prestigious when you can pull it off with as many people as there are to brag on the team this day. Uh, speaking of bragging, we now have a, uh, a recipient that has been a 20-year county employee. Um, I will say because of my prior career before running for this position, um, this individual became one of my favorite, uh, favorite individuals on the planet. I won't say favorite coworker, she's just an incredible person. Uh, Ms. Heather Wofford's now been with Pickens County for 20 years and one month because she wasn't able to be with us last month. But before I have her come up, I want to have Sheriff Craig actually give it, say a couple of words. I just want to say personally how thankful I am for what an incredible job you do. Uh, not only just for, for the sheriff's office, but for the county and just for being a good person typically adds butterfinger candy bars that you hand up. But then after Sheriff Craig speaks for a moment, we'll have you come up and do a photo.
Come on up. Let me come up here in about a second. It's, uh, you know, first of all, thank y'all, Water Fisher, for recognizing, uh, employees, especially that have been here for 20 years. I remember Heather, when I was working for Billy, uh, you know, she came in and was a very hard worker at that time. I can tell you the last 16 years, uh, Heather, and as Chris says, I know you're not supposed to have your favorites, but Heather is one of my favorite people, not just some staff, but just because of how hard she works, how much she cares about the staff, the people, her community. She is probably the hardest worker, hardest employee that I have had in 20 years. She's one of those that is always on time, she's never late, she's always coming in on her time, she's taking care of things when she's off. Uh, she, uh, she's had the employee of the month numerous times, I know, but she's behind the scenes. Uh, as you said, uh, you know, she's one of those that's even kill, but when she's not and she's up, you better listen because something's wrong. For me as a sheriff, it's, it's great to have somebody like Heather that is there every day, that's got you back and that you know whatever decision she made is, is, is right and it's on, it's on point. But not only is she that person for me, I get more compliments about her from our spirit board judges, our magistrate judges, our pro v. judge, about how awesome she is and how well she does her business for them. So I just, I just want to tell you I'm proud of you, I love you. I've kept my attitude in the last 16 years without you.
Well deserved. Excuse me.
Another 20 years, right?
Yeah.
I don't like that podium.
I know.
So there was actually.
Pose is fine.
Congratulations. Well deserved. That's one of the more fun things we get to do is recognizing outstanding employees. So very, very thankful. So with no items on our consent agenda or old business, we will move on to our new business items. Item A in our new business is our audit presentation. We've got Mr. Sam Letterman. Um, Sam's an incredible guy. We've really enjoyed getting to work with him, but I know everybody that has been working closely with him and his staff is really looking forward to him not being here for a few months. So we're, uh, we're looking forward to kicking him out for until the next time around. So audits are, are audits, so as you haven't answered questions. So, uh, I'm going to turn the floor over to Sam, let you.
I appreciate that. I appreciate your kind words and I, I am here to kill all the fun. Like, sometimes that's my job.
There's some amen started popping up.
I'm happy to report that the audit is complete and so I'm here to present the results. So I want to thank the finance department and every other department that, uh, helped us. I know a lot of folks from around the county are here. So they do things outside of their normal job for us and so we, we appreciate that. I know that, that's, uh, we ask a lot of everybody. So I'm going to go through the highlights of the big report here. Each of you have a copy of that and then I've got two letters that I'm going to go through. Uh, but I'm going to go through my presentation first and, uh, feel free to ask any questions along the way if you need to. Now, of course, you, you've hired us to, to audit the county and so we're, that's, that was, that's our job. We are responsible for issuing an opinion under governmental auditing standards, and that's for the year ended December 31, 2024. Um, your responsibility, of course, is, are the financial statements. And so you've accepted responsibility for those financial statements and we've issued our opinion and that is an unmodified opinion. So that's a clean opinion. Um, so that's, you guys get that every year, so that, that's great. But that, that means that everything, we believe everything can be reasonably stated. Uh, and so that's the audit letter, that's, that's most of, of the audit. But speaking of governmental, um, financial statements, you know, it's, it's, they're tricky financial statements. You have full gap, government-wide statements, and so that's what we call the statement of net position that aggregates all your governmental stuff and all your business stuff together. And so you'll find that on page 13 and 14, but that's your assets minus liabilities. And some of these things we call deferred inflows and deferred outflows, all that confusing stuff. I won't get too much into that, but basically it gets down to your net position. And on the next slide, I'll, I'll talk about net position specifically. And then on page 15, you have your state of activities. And so that presents the operating results of the county. And that's all together, full accrual with, with every, uh, different accounting accrual you can have in there. Uh, as you know, your fund statements are on a modified accruals. So, so it's a different basis of accounting. So that one's a lot closer to cash than you could say it would be for this full accrual here. Uh, my slides are a little messed up here. Um, that's okay, I've got the numbers here. So if you're looking at, at 2023, the, up, up top, you can see the, the total amount of, uh, change in that position, or excuse me, government-wide net position is $66.2 million. And so if you, if you look, I know it's hard, hard to read, but I'll, I'll, I'll look at my slides here. You can see that, uh, this year is $70.8 million. So you can see an increase that you've had in your, in your net position. And some of, some of that increase comes from your operations. You had over $2 million in, in government-wide, uh, profit. And then let's talk about some of the, the details here. If you, you look at the biggest block there that's on the bar chart, that's the blue. That's, that's what your, most of your net position is invested in. And so that's invested in capital assets. So that's all the infrastructure, all the assets of the county all together. You can see last year was $51.7 million and then this year is $57 million. So you can see quite a big increase there. So that means that you've invested in, in capital over the year. And I, I've taken that all together, about $6.4 million of capital was invested between the, the, both the governmental and business type activities. So, and you can see that in that number there. Now, the, the red is your, or your restricted funds. And so there's some restricted funds, uh, for, for grants, but most of that is made up of your SLOSS. And so you can, you can see the SLOSS last year was about $10.7 million and it's about $11.8 million this year. So that's, that's the most of that, that red block there. And so then the, the green is really what, whatever's left over. And so that, that's your unrestricted net position. So that's what you have left over to spend as management. Uh, and you can see that went down a little bit, but most of the, the reason it went down is because you had so much investment in, in capital. So that's just the residual of whatever's left over when you put so much in capital. Over to my next slide here. And so this is the general, the general fund. You can see over the last three years, uh, you can see the, the revenues are on, on the blue line there and you can see that, uh, revenues are up about eight percent. Most of that's due to increases in property taxes. Sales tax is up across the board, I'm seeing that in all my governments. I'm starting to wonder if sales tax and those things ever go down anymore. They seem to, I mean, it's at least seven or eight percent over the last 10 years pretty much. But you can see, uh, compared to last year, you had $33.8 million revenue in the general fund issue. You've got $36.5 million. And so that, that other line, uh, below there, that's, that's your expenses. So you can see the difference between the yellow and the blue line is your operating profit there. And expenses are up about 4.9 percent. Most of that's due to, uh, to public safety, mostly due to jail operations. Have you, I'm seeing that a lot with contractual services and deflationary pressures on, on prices and those type of things. So I'm going to make Sheriff mad. Uh, and so, so looking here, you can see that this chart, uh, this is really just to, to show the diversity within your, your revenue streams here. And it's a little hard to see because the legend's in the way, um, but 42% of, of your total revenue is made up of property tax and then 18% is made up of your loss tax, your local option sales tax. And so you, you take those together, that's about 60% of your total revenue. And that's pretty normal. That's, that's pretty much what I see at the most, most other governments. Uh, and now on the expense side, very similar to what I, what I see in, in other governments as well. About 50% of your general fund budget is for public safety. So that's, that's mostly fire, jail and sheriff operations. And so that, that's pretty, pretty, pretty typical there. Now going to your water and super fund, uh, you can see that you've got an increase in revenue of about $440,000, about $3.8 million this year compared to $3.4 million last year. So that, that's a pretty healthy increase, about, uh, 13%. You had about a 4% increase in your customers and about a 5% increase in, in, uh, consumption. So that, that brings, that's most of that, that increase there. And you can see, I believe that rates were increased on, on a consumption base last year, probably about this, about mid-year, that, that sounds right, somewhere around July or August. And so you can see that, that operating revenue was dipping down and, and you guys responded and, and increased. And then you can see the, the difference between those two is your, is your gross profit. Now going to the airport fund. Uh, you can see these numbers here. Now this one's a little bit different in that your, your total expenses are across on the blue line there. So you can see that, that expenses are trending down. And so you can, you can see that's, that's positive. And then also you see your, your operating revenue, um, is also trending up. You can, you can see it's up about 14% or $152,000. And then if you, you add back depreciation, depreciation in the current year is about $494,000. And so that, that brings you almost to a break even on your, your operations. And that, that's pretty much true across the, these last three years, if you were to take that. And I bring that up because that's, that's your, that's a cash basis type, uh, depreciation is a non-cash item. And so it's good to look at, you know, whether or not you're actually making positive cash flow. You don't always get that on the income statement, but it's good to, good to know about that for the cash flow. Um, and then one of your bigger funds, uh, major funds, SLOSS fund, of course, $11.4 million in revenue, 25,000 of that was interest, uh, total expenses, expenditures, uh, $9.8 million and then total transfers of $675,000. That's mostly capital going to the water and airport funds to help fund them. And then you've got about seven other non-major governmental funds, but we won't get into every detail of, of all the funds. But that is your, your last major fund there. Now, of course, you know, governmental auditing standards, like I tell you, um, every year we, we're required to do what, you know, normal auditors do plus a lot more. And that, that is look at your internal control and, and try to help improve that. I looked back, you, you can, you can see this report here, and we do have three, three findings, but looking back through the years, I went back to 2021. When we first started, we did, we did our first audit, you had 14 audit findings. You're down to three. And so kind of a pat on the back there, that's pretty impressive to see that kind of improvement. And so that, that's, that's a product of your, of your work over the years. Um, that report can be found on, on page 133 or 134. Uh, and then of course the audit, uh, findings with responses are on page 140, 144. Now, a government audit would not be complete if you didn't also have to do a single audit within that audit. And of course that is an, an audit on your federal funds that you expand. If you expend over $750,000 of, uh, federal funds that were required to audit that along with the internal control, happy to report that we didn't find anything that you aren't following, that you were completely compliant with everything that we looked at. And so that, that report's on 135 and 136. Now, you did have two, um, government standards that you implemented this year. The first was GASB 100. That was more of a prescriptive type telling you how to handle things than when things changed in the past. And whether to go to beginning balances or ending balances, just how to handle error corrections, you know, changes in accounting principles and those type of things. Uh, but the more fun of the two would be GASB 101, which has really been a more challenging, um, standard to implement. And so the, the county implemented that this year and this, this basically changed the way that you handled your compensated absences. The last time they looked at, uh, compensated absences was GASB 16. And so we're, we're now the GASB 101 and, and you can see that, but the, that's been about 40 years. And so the way that we, we pay employees has changed quite a bit. We've got PTO, sick time and those type of things. For the most part, this, this 101 required you to recognize sick leave or time that may be used in the future. And so pretty much every, everywhere we're going, we're seeing that increase in their compensated absence of the crew. In the county, it went up about $394,000. And that, that's pretty typical, that's about what we're seeing. But on, on top of that, you're recognizing what they call salary, salary related payments, which is Medicare, Social Security, 401A contributions, so. Uh, and then looking forward to 2025, uh, certain risk disclosures, that will likely not affect the county and that you'd be, you would need what they call a concentration or a constraint. Uh, and you would really know about that. So I, I don't expect that to be a big one now, but in 2026, you've got the GASB 103, financial reporting model improvements. It's going to be a big one, but what it could have been is quite, quite nice. When, when they, when they first put out the exposure graph, it was over 300 and some pages. What we got is about 130. So I'm thankful for that. I mean, they were talking about some real crazy stuff in there. I was basically terrified. But either way, that will be one that we work through, that will affect the way that you present, present your, uh, management discussion and analysis in the front. And so there's, there's more of a prescriptive way that you need to do that. It'll also change your proprietary funds and the way they're presented. You'll have a new subtotal and there'll be a section called subsidies. And so we'll, we'll deal with that presentation and I'll be sure to highlight that when we come back in 2026. Happy to report that, uh, we did, uh, the county, the finance department did earn the, um, excellence in, uh, reporting. Much coveted award in, in governmental finance, that's, that's a, that's a big deal. Uh, I expect 2024 will be submitted and also received, you bet, award, so. Any questions on, on any of that? I know that was a lot and I was diving into accounting standards and all that kind of stuff.
Y'all have any questions?
I'll just say thank you and I don't envy your position.
I appreciate that. Uh, I'm going to go through my, my last letter. This is probably more boring part of the presentation, but I do need to communicate this. You're required to, to say some of these things here. Uh, I mentioned GASB 100, I mentioned GASB 101. That's in this letter here, what we call your audit committee letter. And this is my communication to you as the auditor. But do want to remind you that there are estimates within your financial statements and a lot of times what actually happens can be a lot different than what you estimate those to be. And so, but that's just the nature of accounting. That's not something that, that we can tell, like, you know, uh, for instance, your, your overpay balances or your pension plan balance requires all kinds of estimating, you know, mortality charts and all these wonderful things. So I just want you to be aware of, of that. Uh, and then I'm happy to report, you know, difficulties were encountered during the audit. Everyone gave us everything we needed. Uh, if there were any disagreements, we would, you know, we'd hang to that. There were, there were really no disagreements, I should say. But if there was an entry or something that needed to be made, we would, uh, discuss that and get that ultimately. And you've, um, signed a management rep letter, taken responsibility for the financial statements. And, uh, that's really the gist of, of that letter there. Just wanted to make sure I, I communicate that to you. Okay, I'm, I'm happy to take any questions if, if anything came up between that and the presence of the other.
That's a good guess, huh? I'm good. So I'll, I'll echo and say thank you. You've been very, very helpful, man. I know I made the joke about we're looking forward to you not being here for a few minutes. We're closing on staff members, but I think you're true. It's, it's been a phenomenal job with, with professionalism and, and how they work with everybody gathered. We appreciate it.
I appreciate that as well. It's been a pleasure to work with you guys and I appreciate the opportunity.
And thank you for coming up and presenting. It's, uh, I know I've read through some of the, the electronic draft version, but now to have to look and sit down and, and.
You get in trouble sleeping, I crack that open.
I just, my mind going too much.
No, but seriously, if you have any questions, do not hesitate to call, email, whatever you need.
Sure. All right, so since we're on the topic of finance and audits, uh, I know that when we, when we met last month, we had approved some, some ordinances to deal with our finance, the finance ordinances, but we've also went through and done a major overhaul on our finance management policies. So I'm going to have our chief financial officer, Director Schludner, uh, Miranda McVal, come up and just go over some of the highlights that are in the, the financial policies that you guys have received. And if you've had a chance to do them before.
Okay, so I also would like to echo the fact that I appreciate Sam and his hand. They've been wonderful. Um, it's a very stressful time for all of us, so, um, I get it. Well, with these, this financial, um, management policy that, um, is in your backpack, over the course of the past year, with their working and their research, um, looking at other entities and their, their financial policies, um, reviewing our day-to-day, um, procedures and responsibilities and how we function. So within this financial management policy, you'll see, uh, basically how we have been doing things, um, without a policy, but it's our procedures that we have in-house. We would like to get that in writing. So, um, basically promotes accountability, stability, transparency and efficiency overall. Um, with that, some of the major key points are the operating budget and reserve policy as well as the capital improvement policy, the RPE administration and procurement policy and procedures. All of that will help us do our jobs on a daily basis in a very, um, structured way. So, um, I would really like to say that I'm excited with all this. Just say the things, uh, because it provides a good clear guidance for all of us as well as our, the, the whole, you know, finance, finance. Well, actually everyone that builds with the finance department, so. Any questions?
I know an advanced copy was provided for, for each of you electronically, so you can have access to it. And hopefully you've had a chance. I know it's 60, it's a lot paid just long, so I'm not expecting that, that we're going to go through line by line. I do think echoing Miranda, uh, on behalf, you know, coming from a, a budget officer standpoint, making sure that we're doing everything the same in each situation, that we have the same guidelines. And we know that there are occasionally things that, that, that you have to, you have to factor in. There's some anomalies that pop up from time to time, but they're factored in as well within the policies. So for me, I just want to say thanks. I know Miranda and her team's been working on this bill, have worked on this for a period of time as well in, in research and gathering. And Sam with, uh, with Rushden, actually their, their team reviewed and provided guidance to, to recommend on, on judicial as well. So this gives a very comprehensive plan. But if you have any specific questions after you're, you're reviewed it, then. Or with none, do I have a motion to approve, uh, the policy as it's been presented?
Second motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
No offense.
Oh, you depart my head to go get a copy.
See how much they like reading up. So the next item on the agenda is a consideration approval of the memorandum of understanding with North Georgia Community Action. Thank you. See, this is the MATS bus program. Um, we continue this annually, they're just on a state fiscal year annual, so theirs expires at the end of June, versus our, our fiscal year running with the calendar year. The, um, total cost in the program is $225,949.50. That's for the full year from July 1st till June of 2026. So when you see that reflected in our budget, only half of that's budgeted into our budget and then we'll budget the other half into next year because of the, the way that our cycle breaks down out of that number, which it, it actually breaks down, uh, ultimately in the end. But they have provided the, the MOU to continue the operations, to continue the MATS bus program going forward. Hopefully you've had a chance to review that. And if so, do I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding as it's been presented?
Second motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion, your questions? Any discussion or questions? All in favor? None opposed? That motion carries. We'll get that back to that. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ARPA grant award. This is through the court system. I know Ms. Angela Norris is you. She's been working very, very hard on working with federal grants, state grants, all the different programs that you can make sure that the courts are taking care of. They were able to receive funding, additional funding of $688,000 for the circuit. And that's to put in digital systems into the courtrooms, new audiovisual equipment in the juvenile and magistrate and probate courtrooms throughout the circuit and the Young County Jury Assembly Room. Additionally, these funds are to pay for new digital recording systems for all 14 courtrooms in the circuit. Since it is a grant and it's an increase in the revenue from what was originally budgeted, we do need to make a motion to approve the acceptance of those grant funds. So we'll make sure that they go on track with this. Do I have a motion to accept the $688,000 grant into the program?
Second motion.
Any discussion or questions? With none, all in favor? None opposed? Motion carries? We'll be all about to talk to each sometimes. Next item on the agenda is the consideration and approval of a temporary, a resolution to temporarily lift the burn ban. As you are all aware, we could go this past Saturday, we did have a fairly significant storm, especially on the south side of the county. Marble Hill, Nelson and other portions of the county received a lot of damage with trees down. Since we are considered part of the metro area, in this particular area, we're governed by the, the, the burn ban is put in a place that covers the summer months. There is a path to request a temporary lift of that burn ban to be sent through Jima. The steps in working with our EMA director are to declare the state of emergency because of the amount of damage that needs to be cleaned up. Once that declared, declaration's been done, there's a resolution to request to have our EMA director send a request to the state that they lift that burn ban for a period of 60 days. Once that's then provided back to us, we will then have the ability to notify the public and then they have a chance to legally burn the debris that they have in the yard. Drove Yellow Creek over the, the weekend and saw a few small fires going. I'm just going to say they were cooking hot dogs and marshmallows, but there were some big hot dogs and marshmallow fire shit kills. So we want to make sure that, that homeowners, property owners have the ability to clean up that property. And this gives us that chance. Fortunately, it's been very wet, so that in terms of a, a dry summer, that sometimes this time of year we're having, this, this is a little bit safer. But with that, I would like to ask for a motion that we approve a resolution to request, to formally request from Georgia Emergency Management Agency, a temporary lift of the burn ban.
Still moved.
A second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? None, all in favor? Motion carries? We will get that information into their hands and we will go for next. All right, next item on the agenda is we were going through the amendments when we started. It is a 2026 SPOS discussion. Just to go through a timeline for the board, I know we had our planning retreat back on April the 12th, where the SPOS and SWAS projects were discussed at that point in time. And reviewed the need for several of these different projects, including the public section facilities, infrastructure, parks and recreation, fiery mess number one, the road streets and bridges. Then we also have the sheriff's office for their vehicles and other equipment needs. Water and sewer facilities and then general government facilities as well. During the discussion, we kind of came back with the, the approach to CK five-year SPOS, which under OCGA follows the, the population guidelines. That resolution was approved on May the 5th. We, one of the requirements in OCGA is a meeting with the cities. That meeting was conducted on June the 10th to, to provide them with the information and to request their project list during that meeting and following that meeting. Two of the cities, both Jasper and Nelson, have provided letters. I know we each have received requests that we seek an IGA for a six-year period versus the five-year that was approved in the resolution on May the 5th. Citing the different needs for the infrastructure that they had had. The city of Jasper had also cited a joint project where a portion of that money would then be returned back to the county. I know each of you have had a chance to review those. Opening up for discussion, I believe in our resolution that was passed on May the 5th as a fair assessment for all citizens, as the governing authority over 86% totally that, that we, we have to represent on, in addition to the, the cities. The majority of our projects that we've included are for all citizens. They're not, they're not isolated from incorporated outwardly. So my recommendation would be upholding the, the, the May 5th resolution that was passed. I do want to open it up for discussion in case either of you feel differently. Obviously, this is, this is a chance that if you didn't, we would need to move back on our resolution that was passed. And they.
I think we should keep it like it is. I don't think we should change this.
Yeah, so from my perspective, I tried really hard to look at this from every angle. I met with Mayor Raffield, I've met with Mayor Green, spoken to several different council members. But at the end of the day, everybody that lives in this county pays SPOS. That's people that come through this county also pay SPOS. But if, if I'm paying a tax, I want to know that, that my money is being spent in the area where, where it's being collected, you know? So ultimately I, I'm going to fall on the side of the five-year SPOS with, with the recommended from the state as well. It's a, if you take the total dollars received by SPOS and divide it by the population, there's a pretty wide disparity in, in today's SPOS between, between what's collected. But with this five-year plan, it takes that, that number from, it starts at like $2,000 difference from the lowest to the highest. And in the five-year plan, it goes down to a $30 difference between the municipalities and government. So I'm, I'm going to fall on the side of the five-year SPOS. I, I appreciate the conversations. Everything was done respectfully and Mayor Green's here. I appreciate the conversation we had. I had, that's, that's being more than that, so I appreciate y'all.
And I believe that the five-year, one of the other things that we've mentioned before, gets it back in the hands of the voter center. We're held accountable for the length of time taxes collected. Going for a five-year versus a six-year means you've got to go back to the public a year earlier, but it's, it's that accountability factor on money as well. With that, if there is no appetite to dissolve the resolution or to rescind the resolution that was passed, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And that's the consideration and approval of the Henderson Mountain Road Waterline Project Bid. We did have a hit opening that took place on. June the 10th. And we had six bids that were received. This is the project to replace the water line across Henderson Mountain. The rockiest, the rockiest piece of land in this side of the Rockies, I do believe. But that bid did go out, out of the, out of the six that responded. We had a range of bids from anywhere from $1.9 million up to $6.4 million that came in for the replacement of that, that water pipe. The engineers, turn to see the engineers as taking all the bids compared, checked all of the references. And they came back and recommended that the low bid alternative, one, be the, the recommendation of our engineers. That's Amshiv Construction LLC. They're out of Lawrenceville, Georgia. They did check the references on the numerous other projects that they've completed. That bid is 1.920722.5. So it's $1,92722.50. That is with the county providing the water pipe. So we would be responsible for the water pipe. I know Philip has, has reached out to all of the primary pipe companies that work with the state. And that, that cost for the pipe is going to be in the bulk market, $450,000. Philip's recommendation was to go with Fort Wyman Water Works for $452,255.60. And that is to replace and run new water pipe all through there. We had already approved the paving bids early. Those paving bids are, are kind of on hold until the water line gets replaced. And then they suck down. The, the company that was awarded that bid has stated that they will come back. And the only thing that might change would be the asphalt, if the asphalt price goes up, if they have to come at a later time beyond that six months, but that they will continue to honor their dish on the paving project. So with that, I know Philip's here. If there's any questions, I can go ahead and, and ask. If y'all have any questions, you can ask him directly beforehand. But if, if you don't, then we'll, we'll extend a motion to approve.
After we do this, you'll have it done next week, Russ.
I wish.
They have a six-month window.
They got a six-month window.
They have a six-month window to complete the project.
Six months for the water item and then the paving?
Yeah. So what'll, what'll realistically happen, the water line will be completed. Will fall into the winter season, so we'll have to wait until the weather warms back up and then the paving will be completed. I don't think we'll have to wait all the way until your normal projects go back out, but that's going to be a lot of coordination that we'll have to work with. On their cut-throughs, when they cut across to go, there is in the project that they do have to put concrete in there. So there shouldn't be loose gravel crossing the road repeatedly. So that when we do come back and pave, we're going to be paving over the concrete that covers those cross pipes instead of, instead of gravel. So that if it is left for a few months, that prevents some safety issues with it, with loose gravel.
So the more you talk, the more questions I. In, in today's world, right, that water line goes under Henderson Mountain Road, like it's dead center under it. So are we, so are we going to bury this out to the side?
To the best of our ability, we're going to be on the shoulder of the road or off the shoulder of the road. The right of way up there is 40 foot and it's either straight up or straight off. But for the most part, we're going to be on the shoulder of the road. And there is also a cause in there. If they in any stretch of rock, they have to bed the pipe. That way, if we are on the shoulder of the road, we're going to be in sand or 57s or 89s. So.
Better than injecting concrete. So they won't know.
Ends up last five years.
Yeah, I do. Shouldn't we have this done? But we have that. We would no further questions for Philip. Do I have a motion to approve the, the low bid as recommended from turn-up senior engineers for Amshiv Construction LLC?
You have my bid, sir. My motion. You have my motion. I'm excited about that. Call second.
All right, motion second. Any further discussion? With none, all in favor? None opposed? I know that the pipe company is under state contract, but just because it is a $452,000 expenditure, I would like to go ahead and ask that we make a motion to authorize the expenditure of that $452,000 as well. These are both SPOS projects. They're both going to come out of money that has been accumulated in the SPOS account. But do I have a motion to, to follow the, the water department's recommendation with Fort Wyman Water Works for $452,255.60 for the pipe?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor? None opposed? That motion carries? We get that up and going. That's been a, a fun project just to get to this stage. That's a lot of work. It was, it was going to be a lot of fun. Next item on the agenda is under our action items is to approve our minutes from the regular meeting on May the 22nd. According to Kristi Poole, the progress, it was the longest meeting we've had in several years because that's the first meeting she got asked to cover, so. And according to the length of the minutes, I'm sure as you've had a chance to read, that I think that matches up with her, her statement. Well, all the minutes have been provided for you to have a chance to review. Hopefully you have. If so, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as they've been presented?
Still moved.
A second.
Move in a second. Any discussion? All in favor? None opposed? Thank you, Ms. Lisa, for putting together a phenomenal set of minutes for some complicated meetings. All right, we will move into our rezones. We do have a handful of rezones. The first is RZ 190926. It's from Scott in Cassidy, Connecticut. It's a request to move a three-acre, a three-acre portion of a 10.3 acre tract from a state residential to rural residential at 146 High Meadows Lane in Talk Rock. The application was received by the Planning and Development Office. And within the application, it states that the intended purpose of the rezon request is to create two additional buildable lots. The public hearing was held on the 12th of May before the planning commission, where they received a vote, the five yes, zero no to approve the rezon request after receiving a affirmative recommendation from the, the Planning and Development Office as well. So with that, do I have a motion to follow the recommendation from the planning commission to approve this rezon request?
Motion to approve.
A second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? None opposed? Motion carries? Next rezon request we have is from Mr. Kevin Moss. Kevin Moss at 2500 Highway 136 Connector. It's a request to move a .54 acre tract for rural residential to Highway Business. Mr. Moss submitted his application on the tract stating that the request, if approved, was to create a fruit stand. The public hearing was held on May the 12th, where the planning commission followed the staff recommendation, vote for approval, five yes, zero no. Do I have a motion to follow the planning commission's recommendation on this request?
Motion to approve.
A second.
Any motion in a second? Any discussion or questions? All in favor? None opposed? That motion carries? Next is RZ 190932. It's Billy Lamb on behalf of David Gaddis. It's a 34.74 acre tract requested to go from ag to small ag on Vic Ridge Road in Talk Rock. The application was received and within the application, it stated that the reason for the rezon request was to create five residential lots, being five plus acres each. Public hearing was held on May the 12th, where the planning commission voted on, on this, this request. They voted five yes, zero no to approve the rezon request, which was also recommended for approval from the planning staff as well. Do I have a motion to follow the planning commission's recommendation for approval?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? None opposed?
I promise she cares.
The final rezon request that we have is RZ 190933 from Jimmy Cagle. It's a .5 acres of a 9.35 acre tract to Highway Business and the remaining 8.85 acres to Small Ag, request on Highway 53 West. Planning and Development Office received the application from Mr. Cagle. And he indicated in the application, if approved, was to sell the .5 acres to a neighboring property currently is on Highway Business and correct the non-conforming lot with the remaining 8.85 acres. The public hearing was held on May the 12th, where the staff recommended approval and the planning commission voted for yes, zero no to approve the request for rezoning this 9.35 acre tract. Do I have a motion to follow the planning commission's recommendation?
Motion to approve.
A second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or question?
A quick question now. Is the .5 acres, is this being combined into the other track as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All in favor? None opposed? Motion carries?
I'll take a minute here.
You bet.
Just want to give shout out to them folks on the west end because that was four rezon requests, all on the west end and probably the four easiest rezones I've seen in a long time. Thank y'all.
That's fine. So the next one, as we're, we're entertaining humor, when you, when you see the names, but I will read the letter that we had received. It's a consideration and approval for the appointment of Sandy Tatum to the Higgins County Library Board. We received a letter from Angela Corlina with the, the library assistant, the school regional library assistant. She had stated that Ms. Rhonda Stansel's term would be expiring on June the 30th, 2025. And that she has asked not to be reconsidered for reappointment. She wants to spend time with family. So with the vacancy, their board met and submitted the recommendation with, for Ms. Sandy Tatum as their choice to fill that term from July 1st, 2025 till June the 30th, 2029. The humorous part is the Stansel that's coming off the board is actually not a relative of mine. Or if so, it's a very distant relative that I don't know that we even have a relationship. However, the Tatum that is coming on the board is a relation to one of our, our board members who has stated he would like to recuse himself from voting on this, since it is a family member. But with that, I would like to present the, the resolution for the appointment of Ms. Sandy Tatum to the board. Sandy's a phenomenal lady and I, I think will do a phenomenal job personally. And since one is recusing, I will make a motion that we approve placing Ms. Tatum on the library board. Do I have a second?
I'll second your motion, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have any discussion? Do I have any discussion or questions? Yes. With none, all in favor? None opposed? Get her up and going. See, I prevented you from even having the same. Trying to help you. All right, that brings us to our guest comments portion. Reminder that any guest comments, we have a two-minute window for anybody that has comments. We'll open up and show us both of them. Yes, sir.
Sylvia Green, Mayor from City of Nelson. I'm disappointed in, as you all know, I did have a great conversation with you, Mr. James, and I appreciate it, but disappointed because the 1.65 that was proposed will gut our, our capital through some planning, the city of Nelson. We currently have water going in purpose houses. We have spent $1 million of capital improvement just in 20, from 2022 to now to eradicate our storm drain issues. You're aware of that, you know, we talked about census, like census is down by 13%. We're going to do an internal census. 20% of our digest fell off by your tax commissioner's office and you're aware of that. And you want to go per capita, City of Nelson has no restaurants, they have no entertainment, they have no dollar stores, no gas stations, so we have no other incoming revenue. The previous administration, the commissioners understood that and they, that's why we were at 4.4%. So you took us from 4.4% to 1.65%. I'm very disciplined with that. And I would, if I didn't stand up and say something, I would be doing the people that I represent a disservice.
Thank you. We should have a voice up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? There's no other comments, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We lose a chair, thank you.